We are good to go on the alley thing.
Thanks.
Right.
Yeah, one, some.
Robert called and emailed.
She said she had.
Yeah, I get it.
We're good, right? And emailed it back just to confirm, and I didn't get a response.
The other one.
Or check tonight.
It's a dead man.
So is it going all the way through?
Yep. All the way through.
We're gonna do. So it's gonna jag out by here?
No.
It won't be noted, it won't be that noticeable. It can scooch to the, to the last little land property too.
No, no. I've had this for about a year now.
Call the main order, local. Here, here.
Us?
Here.
Stand here?
Here. Public forum? That's unknown.
Now Deb, Deb wanted some, uh, public forum time.
I do.
You're first up, you're up.
I'm Deb Shaden, I know many of you, but there's two or three that I guess I don't. I live up at eight, on Madison Street, eight fifteen, which is on the corner of Highway one seventy-five. My issue today to visit with you is about his truck parking. It's been a lifelong struggle of ours up there on the hill, with those that park there overnight, plus locals who wanna park there for the weekend or what have you. I have a photo. Let me go this way. There's the truck that parked there Sunday afternoon. When he first parked, he parked entirely in front of my house, and I looked out my picture window to the north, I saw a truck box. I went out and asked him if he would move back from my property so that I could at least look out my windows, and this is where he parked. He sat there for till after one, and then someone came and attempted, picked him up, and then went out again and asked him if you're gonna leave here, would you park it? Because he doesn't have a reefer, but there was something that goes on and off and on and off. Finally, after six, he came back. Tonight, before I came, this is a truck that's parked not quite on my place, but down the street, in front of the furniture store down there. He's not parked at the curb, and he's not parked at the shoulder, he's right in the middle. He's a local of some sort, somebody comes and picks him up, he parks there two, three nights a week, generally.
Is there all night, Deb?
He's there all night, leaves about five. Sometimes his buddies come, and they all congregate there, and then they leave. So there might be five trucks by five o'clock in the morning. I guess what I'm asking is if the council in the city would give it, to put some no-truck parking signs, at least from my property to the corner.
You know, a lot of times they'll still be there, like, type of droby stuff.
Depending on what time.
Why he tolerates it, yeah.
Depending on what time of the night.
He can't even park in front of his own business. I mean, this has went on for a lot of years, so it's not something new, but what's really bad is when they have a reefer on, and that reefer shuts off and on. And the other thing I thought about this afternoon was, with the new business coming across the street, you know, there's gonna be more traffic in that area, and I think there's probably a little safety concern, especially when they park in the middle of the street, so to speak. You have school events going on.
Is there some, is there some kind of an ordinance about truck parking in residential, really, from your homes, or?
So I was just kinda checking, checking that out, and, you know, we have, basically, a lot of it's addressed through a truck route, where, where these trucks can't get off the truck route in residential areas in town. Of course, uh, the highway and Ninth Street, nope, the highway is, is a, is a truck route.
I thought this, is it, I guess my point is, is it a, is it a street?
Yes, Ninth Street is.
So this truck right here is parked in the middle of the street? Is that not correct?
It's, how, wait, what's that situation up there, Jack? There's a, kind of a hashed area, it used to be a hashed area between the.
On each side.
Like on the south side of the highway.
South and north. So people want to park there.
It's not, it's not there anymore.
No.
You know, I think we'd all agree, when you sit and look out your window, you'd certainly like to see, although it's not a million dollar view, you would like to be able to see it, wouldn't you?
I hate to listen to a reefer run off on my.
Well, that happens all the time.
Livestocks.
It's not so bad right now because of the truck.
Cause then they go off, you know, they poke them to get them up, and then you hear that all night.
They squeal and they kick.
I've noticed in my travels when, back when, there's a lot of communities that put out signs that says, "No overnight parking."
Well, the problem I have with that was, that wouldn't have helped me Sunday.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, the thing about that.
I'm happy, you know, people are missing the cars, or, you know, there's something different about a diesel running, a reefer running off and on.
Because they could surely park down, uh, TCT parking lot, or?
Well, this truck Sunday was a Schuster, Schuster or something, I don't, he turned around and went west, and we left.
You know, the problem is a lot of park local.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, you know, they don't, they don't know if it's up the park, I mean, they were probably using it for new.
Didn't this come up once before?
We've struggled, we've struggled with truck parking on and off for years, come up many times, and.
No, I don't.
You know, I don't know that we've ever come up with any real good answer to it.
I don't particularly care what they do down the ways, those people, they're not there at night. I have to sleep though.
I thought we did something, because it was residential, where Chuck, he was parking. He used to park, and that's what pushed him into building his garage.
I think we have to change the ordinance, the way I put a sign up, we have to make sure we enforce it, it'll be the other problem.
Well, I would be happy to call at two o'clock this morning when you wake me up.
Can't say as a blamey event, I wouldn't mind that.
It's not like the household, the TV zone or something, it's, you know, it's quiet.
Is, what, what is it, is it mainly at night, or, I mean, I know you said this Sunday it was sometime, but today, most time is it?
Well, if there's a school building, somebody wants to go, see, they're going on school, they mark their, for two, three hours, but I have somebody do that, but, you know, the reason I know that is when you come back, you come back to your kids, they get to park their home.
That is probably the concern.
And it's not, it's not, in the daytime, it's not so much noise, it's just the idea of, I have to go out and ask them, you know. They wouldn't park in front of my, wouldn't they?
One hour, or something on it, or have you seen anything like that, Whitey, or?
I don't, I never seen no title, I've seen no truck parking, I've seen no overnight parking, it's just, that's about what she wants, to say on how you know.
I always thought that was a separate road, basically.
It is.
Said it's like a parking in the middle of the road.
That's what I was gonna say.
It is, kind of like.
Technically, technically, the guy's parked in the middle.
We should, we should.
Well, it's, I could say there, there's, so we have the, the road of buildings, roadies buildings and whatnot, then there's Ninth Street, Eight, Eight Street, then there's an area of other, right away between the highway and the Ninth Street, and then you get to the highway somewhere. So I say, it always used to have this hashed off area out there.
You just do that again? Take the hashes on it, put up the fire, and enforce it?
Yeah. Call tip?
Well, the hashed off area ends up on the edge of the road.
Yeah.
Right, it's on the edge of the road.
On the edge of the highway, that doesn't mean anything, that just brings them closer to the.
I mean, I think the solution for her would be.
Truck parking. Especially if it's residential.
You know, the other side of the argument.
When my mother was home, mom, before she passed away, that was her day, was to sit in the chair and look out.
Come off, move it down the road, go and park somewhere else. I need to sit up and.
I'm not asking that you cut all parking down.
Do you need an ordinance?
I'm not asking that every time a truck pulls off to make a bone call, or to.
Put up a sign.
To look at GPS, or, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but if they're gonna park there, or, any like.
You don't have to go through big work, it's, I think, you should put a little sign. Put a little parking sign. So say what I, how I.
You consider, you do what you think you need to do, I would appreciate you.
Or should you do a gift of no parking? See what we can do.
I would appreciate that.
Like a no parking here at the corner, or.
You got some little signs laying around, Jack?
You want no truck parking here at the corner?
Yeah.
That's, that's.
It does become a issue when there are spore gnats.
If you put no truck parking, at least they don't sell much.
Right.
Yeah, they can still park.
For the cars, they can still park there.
So where's, where's the sign get posted?
They got the other end.
In a barrel in the middle of the street, or?
No, I would have to. I don't know. They face mainly going east, don't they, to their park?
Yes.
You know, you could put it up there and face it east, because it's diagonal parking that way, and maybe up there by, uh, in the middle of the lot, maybe.
Quite honestly, it's all fucking vertical diagonals, pretty low, they just park.
You gotta put it someplace when they pull off that they, they see later, pull them off, because if you put it up too far, they're gonna be passive as they.
Right.
I guarantee you where you put the sign, that's where they'll stop.
Couldn't you put it there by the sidewalk, the stuff?
You could put it by my sidewalk.
Yeah.
That would help.
Maybe there, and then one, I would maybe put two, one up by the corner.
You'll take care of that, Jack?
If I can get something working.
I appreciate it, guys, and I thank you very much for your time.
Cement buried here.
Someone try to.
I have to put snow around it, you know?
Is that a agenda?
Uh, all of the building permits have been approved, except for need to discuss that Bob Franklin, I'd like to leave that out of.
Thanks, guys. And ladies.
Sorry. I said a dirty word.
What do you want to take up?
Bob Franklin. Not that they're all approved.
Motion, seven, agenda? All right, good.
Second?
Awesome.
Local.
Thank you.
Yes.
Us?
Yes.
On this Bob Franklin, this sketch. So Bob's, uh, permit is for a, basically, it's a, I called it a deck, but it's basically a, a larger landing out in front of a stepway, that's front door. He had built this thing without a permit, and then we asked him to get a permit after the fact. He paid his fee, I've been to the attorney in the paper, I filled out a home form, he paid his fee, and send Darrell out to check this out, and to come up with these measurements on the bottom, so just know that the, the front yard setback is, you go from Bob's house, you get two hundred feet to either side, and whatever's in that two hundred feet, you measure the front yard setback, and you take the average of all of those properties. That's why you get all of these numbers about how far the other woods are back. So, the, uh, the average should be twenty-three feet, Bob's is twenty-one feet. You know, subject to a little bit of flux there, and Darrell didn't really want, didn't want to approve it and, and say that it was okay, yet at the same time, didn't really have any big problems with it, although it probably technically doesn't mean you're part of the law. Although it's, like I say, there's a little bit of flux in it, and you're, and you're only dealing with, with a couple of feet, and the area that you are dealing with, largely questions handrails. Did anybody have a chance to look at this?
Need the variance, I'm not.
That's the question before you, you know, uh, if you, if you look at very strict enforcement, it would either need to be moved back to read the code, or need the variance. I don't know that I'd suggest that.
Do you need a bill?
The other question.
Has there been any complaints from neighbors, or?
You know, basically, the neighbors did the same thing. Neighbors to the north just reconstructed their, their deck there too, but they got a, they had a building beforehand, and.
Well, I mean, I don't have an issue with building, but I do have a, I do have an issue with that for a while.
Hadn't heard about it.
So your recommendation is?
That's, it. But the proper way to put this is, though, we ought to, uh, issue a, issue a building permit for it.
Should it go through a variance, it always goes back to the G and C?
To the board judge. Costs him a hundred bucks to apply for that. For, uh, two hundred fifty dollars of that.
But you never did the.
Didn't do the per. It's terrible. And I'm just telling you, I don't have a problem, I don't really have any concerns about what it looks like, or anything like that, but, say, goes after mayor production, you can let it off. Yet, at the same time, like I say, there is a little flux in there, two feet worth in there.
Neighbors don't have a problem with it?
Haven't talked to the neighbor, but we haven't heard from them. Just went out to check it today.
They all do the same, they all do it.
What kind of pressing, I guess, when you said that everybody, pretty soon will be scheduled off the sidewalk.
Well, that's the deal about this average, is that it ends up keeping everybody in line.
If we follow.
If you follow.
Would that change that?
Little bit.
You know, it's not gonna make a difference to the average, but we're gonna find.
You know, and that's, that's kinda why we have these harder, harder rules, the way that we do, otherwise, our standard rule for, uh, for front yard setbacks, twelve feet. But it's twelve feet or this average thing, whichever is more restricted.
So we need a motion to approve this, what it.
Or he could, or can take no action, not, not take a look at it? This thing? This was just the last minute deal, so it got measured up today.
It's the last minute.
They're gonna want you to look at it?
I tried, I'm feeling with the neighbors, but, I mean, it doesn't affect any construction view, or anything concerned, because like I said, the people next door, they just play with that, and they, they're by the woods.
Yep.
I'm trying to look at, look at the neighbors, doing this and that. I don't have a problem, we don't have to believe in anything, we don't have to look at it, but, you know. Put on that. Can you get some, you check with the neighbors?
Okay. Gus? Yeah. Did you want to state your case in front of the full council? We, uh, we didn't tape it last night.
Well.
You can send it to Tony's, you understand?
Actually, that costs five dollars more. Here the ruling on the day. Pictures I had, where the wire was. Here, show where it's broke. And that, uh, is a pipe there, hanging on a ground from, from one mark to the next mark.
You don't want to color film?
Wall mark. This shows the distance. This shows the inside of the building, on just that, the water line, or the pipe, or the cable that broke was on the inside of the water line, and the outside shows the other way, the water line.
So this, this one doesn't move, does it?
That's just. That shows the outside of the building, that white pipe is where the mark is on the ground, for the, the mine loss. But it's. Get this, work for shit. And you gotta go over where you break the line, to the nearest mark is. And that's how you make. As long as you're out, over eighteen inches away from that mark, you can dig as deep as you want. Got hand shovel the rest the way in. That's, that's the rule.
But in all fairness, fairness, you did know from the.
No, I didn't.
You knew it was in the dirt.
I knew it was either higher than where we was digging, or in the deep, is what they said, and we dug down on the other side, and we hand dug, and kept going down a little deeper, and we hand digged some more, and we got all the way down, and we figured it was probably about that far from the line. And we thought, well, we just dug over two foot, way down deep, so we figured out it must be tighter. So it shows right there, twenty-eight inches away, we dig, right at that point, shouldn't have been there. You wanna dig down, push your board underneath, and then on the wire, we done that lot, bits of that, you did. Dig eighteen inches, or over eighteen inches on each side, take a board, shovel through, go out, yes, go down four foot.
Well, when we, we had a, a committee meeting, the utilities committee meeting with, with Gus, and tried to talk through some, some options about, you know, whether there was any shared responsibility, and could come up to some, some middle ground, you know, basically, you know, Gus really felt that he was not at all responsible for it, and didn't, you know, didn't seek any middle ground, conscious, willing, not at all, so that's kinda where we're at now. Gus was talking about that, that eighteen inch tolerance zone, and it's just that, you know, our, our interpretation of that, the way the code reads, is that it deals with, with digging around this eighteen inch tolerance zone, so it is just not hard and fast at eighteen inches, and that would be our contention.
Which is. You can dig right up to eighteen inches, if you hit something, it's not your fault.
Okay, you see, that's where we, that's where we would disagree.
You gotta hand dig the rest, yes. Otherwise, geez, how much hand digging would there be out there? It used to be less than eighteen inches, and then they went up to eighteen inches, because some people were complaining, oh, we need a little variance.
Bill, do you have anything to add?
Pretty much is.
I guess the thing that worried me is you guys didn't hit it where they had a mark, so you kept digging, and whether we're right or wrong, or you're right or wrong, next time, call Bill and get it remarked, because I don't want someone hitting something and getting killed.
Well, that's, it was remarked, like I said, you know, the.
I don't wanna mark the hard way when we slice it with a bucket.
No, well, I, I don't either. Twenty-eight inches, you know, it should not have been there. I mean, even if it was out at eighteen inches, I'd have missed it.
At the committee meeting, we did give Gus, I gave you a couple of options, didn't I? One, just, you just pay the parts, and we'd eat the labor, but you didn't wanna do that.
No.
And the other was, we would let the bill go, and after, we hadn't figured out the time, but if you hit another one down the road, then you were gonna pay that, and you didn't like that option. Then the other option was, you weren't gonna pay anything, and you liked that option.
I spent two days with my hired man, working down there, helping him, doing digging, buttering a little sand, I felt bad I hit the wire, but I'm not gonna be abused by when I'm in the right, any more than that. That's the way I feel.
Yeah, one option is kind of like probation, isn't it? I mean, if you hit something. But then a certain amount of time. It's kind of like probation period. Well, we were trying to find a middle ground, we didn't find any. And Gus, I know, I know the eighteen inch thing you're talking about, I, I talked to two estimators, one, you know, running the highway on one seventy-five to the lower bill in Lake City, and also talked to utilities duty in Lake City, that's where we do business too. They all go by the eighteen inch thing. If you're, if you're in that eighteen inches, you're liable, and you're outside of it, that's the way they look at it, is you're not liable. And I know they offered you options, I, Scott explained it to me here after the meeting, and, you know, Tim voiced his concern in his opinion last meeting, and I'm gonna state my opinion. I, the way I feel about it is, I mean, you know, we're, we're a city that has a business, but we're also a municipality that it is a business in the electric department. And you know, with the while, I mean, there's several of us in the room that are a business, and with the while, you gotta eat one. And I think this is what time the city needs to eat one. We're not gonna hit any middle ground anyway, because Bill's not gonna stand up and say that, here, well, we've all been down and looked at it, I mean, even though you knew it was there, you're a long ways from eighteen inches. And my, my position right now is that if, if, I'm, I'm, I would, if Tim don't make the motion, I'll, I'll make the motion, that we, that we, we eat it. So is that motion, and just let it go? I'm, I'll make that motion unless, if anybody else has any objection, but, I mean, I think, well, I agree with you, we need to work with this, and especially you, Gus, I mean, I don't, I mean, where it's marked, I mean, we wanna, I mean, I don't wanna come out there with ambulance and find, find people, you know, a little breathing.
No.
But I mean, but I mean, that's the big concern, I think, as Bill's concern too, is somebody's gonna get hurt.
Sure.
You know, but, I wouldn't want, even want, either.
That wouldn't have been good.
Right. But, but, I'll make a motion that we, we, we drop it and move on, but. I'll second.
Local?
Just, uh.
Okay.
My, uh, I worded that very as forgiven, but.
That's, that's what I'm.
Okay. Gus?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Gus, thank you.
No. Gus, you're free to go.
Free to go, okay.
The only thing I would say.
Try much for the chair.
Is that next time you do have to call, you own one, or whatever.
Do a full one call.
You do have to call, you can't just call Scott and.
Well, as, as we talked with, in the committee meeting, you know, uh, we did, we will require, you know, formal one calls on everything, we'd be just talking with the staff, and whenever, whenever folks are crossing primary, we'll have our guys there to, to help cross the primary, just generally, uh, get, gets away from any of these problems, and if we follow through and by the, the vac, you know, we can, we can do that easier.
I think every safety measure ought to be taken, that's available, but, you know, don't get in a hurry, I mean, make sure you're, you're covered before you, before you drop that bucket. Don't put another building over the top of wires.
Well, well, we hit one out there, like I say, at Dixieland, where there was no marks.
That was like a hundred and fifty feet away, wasn't it? From what I was told.
Yeah.
It was a long ways from.
It went behind the trailers, and it was, just was digging in the road there.
I understand. Was that the accident, you lost all your hair?
Yeah, that's.
Well, I know what you're saying, you know, whenever you dig, you're on the risk you hitting something, right?
You do, you do, you never know. Now, the other day, I dug Minor Peterson, had all the marks, so, the only one I was waiting for was Iowa Telecom, and our wind stream, so I call, uh, this, what's his name? Alber. He works for the wind stream, and he is up at the office up here, he's up, come down, come down. No, don't worry about that, he ain't been up there.
The weapons, Jerry?
Yeah, Jerry, yeah. So, we went ahead and dug, so five o'clock, we left, five o'clock that night, the one call guy finally made it there, his truck broke down, and he was having a heck with time, and, uh, he made a mark, probably about that far from where I was digging. They don't use it anymore, it's a dead line. They don't use it anymore, it's a dead line, but it is their line. And Evan said, you know, there ain't nothing over there, go ahead and dig.
Nobody knows the...
So you run it, yeah, there's so much in the ground anymore that it's, I don't even like to dig in town.
We'll see if we can't stick together and make sure it won't happen.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks, Gus.
Thank you.
Thanks, please. Must be making copies of sentences.
That one made him mad.
Uh, I've tried that, it doesn't work.
Doesn't, doesn't mean...
We hope they... They surely got something there. The alley between Blossom and Vine, we decided on that blue line jack.
Yeah, we can, we can work and live with that.
Between, right. How about those tree limbs over on Earl's?
Well, that's what I would, well, probably just be able to cut them straight up on the property line.
Because they'll be too low for you to get back, you'll hit your back old cab trucks or whatever.
Then I'd say, go all the way back to the tree, but I don't know whose trees they are. Earl just rents, don't he?
Mm-hmm. But if we can get by just throwing the leaves or the limb off, towards the alley. We're, we're clear up to the blue line.
If the trees disappeared, it wouldn't break my heart.
Whose property are the trees on?
They're on Earl's, or whoever owned that.
Who owns it?
Earl's, I don't know who he's telling me.
Yeah, he's working at it.
I didn't tell him.
I think there's some issues that are...
I went down, worked out, he came out, told me he was...
You rent a long time, you never own.
We're on for doing the alley, everybody's signed off.
All right. Want to start, Jack? We'll probably just try to get it done here, maybe start cutting the trees and shrubs out of it this week yet. That way it's done.
That's what it was, I just wanted to call Robin and confirm this again, because I emailed her today and hadn't... I emailed her my, my understanding, I wanted to make sure that we all agree. Anyway, you need to place a gravel surface on the entire length of the alley between Blossom Street and Vine Street, from First to Third Street, and that the property of Robin up in the alley surface would not be placed closer than seven feet from the east right-of-way line of the alley, that's the blue paint mark. Okay? And they're all agreeable to that.
I'm, so removal would go up past my property, then? Jack, you're all the way through?
All the way through.
Okay.
Instead of turning around, Barrows, just, whichever happens to be in the room.
Well, that's kind of the whole reason why I use my back alleyway, but Jason Lemuck to the south, I mean, he doesn't have any parking. He's got a garage, but it's too narrow to park a car. So he gets a ticket, he parks in the street, and if the alleyway isn't plowed, he can't park in back, so... Unless I let him park in my driveway, he's got no place to park.
We've just...
And we have a motion to approve this, as I read it.
Need a motion to that?
I'll send it.
Second?
I'll do it.
We'll call.
Gus?
Yes?
Lane?
Yes.
Trey? Not staying?
Staying? Yes.
Okay, we're gonna cut down some trees. That's gonna sound really good.
There's a lot of them.
There's a lot of dead ones, partially dead ones.
How many, how many do you feel that you can't take down safely?
I've got, I talked to Ed at the heat, probably one down here on South Main Street. It's, probably two-thirds of it's rotten. It's only like six, three inches, and it's all leaning over the house, so...
We want to avoid them if we can.
Right, so, and we'll clean it up, so it just, whatever. They went, and he looked at it, and he hasn't gotten back to me yet, so it might, it's not a very pretty tree at all. And it goes above the second layer over the house, so... But the rest of them are pretty simple, ten or twelve of them are in the campground again. Four or five down Keenhold. And there's a couple more maples, further south, or north. So there's...
What kind are most of them, is there?
Mostly maples in the park again. The pine trees are all going long-term. We got four of them by Keenhold there, we got one up there by the, where we did that new bathroom in Speaker Park. There's two there, a pine and an oak. They're dying, so, yeah, there's... And then people are calling me, saying, well, I want this tree done, since they see all the axes.
Yeah, that, that's an important issue about, about this in general, because there's some trees that people would just like to have removed. And, you know, as practice, we don't remove trees just because they want them gone, you know, it's... There gotta be a real legitimate reason why we would remove a tree.
Are we monitoring green paint sales at the hardware hangar?
I think Jack knows which one he axed. There might be a lot of extra axes out there. But is it just that you, you know, you want Jack to keep whittling away at them? And we'll get some prices on the ones, the one particular one that he's talking about?
Well, I'd say, yeah, I mean, we could do it in-house, I mean, get the low-hanging fruit, and the tough ones, let's get out, but... We talked about timing here, though. Would you guys wait until the ground's froze, or start as soon as you can, or... No, there's, we've got a bunch of digging and stuff to do yet, so then we'll... Be nice to do some in the campground before it gets too yucky, or there's some, some wet areas there. There's four or six in there again, so...
Well, certainly it's worth trying to do it in-house before we have to...
I mean, yeah, if we can't get to them, it might be an open winter where you can, you know, trim them all winter, so... We've probably taken down that many this year already.
So far, we've cut every tree in town down, from what I've heard.
We've cut so many more trees than what we ever used to. I think our trees are really getting in a sad shape over the last ten, fifteen years.
That's quicker than what people thought. There'd be at least five here, a little bit of that.
Okay, proposals for the sewer plant rough?
This would be to re-rough the, the primary clarifier building. We got those two proposals, one from Andrews and one from Triple C. So Andrews is the lowest cost on that. This work was proposed to be included in previous year's budget. But we do have funds available and propose to pay for it through the sales tax funds.
And the difference between how they're gonna do it?
Andrews is, is the, kind of the traditional barrier with rock. And, and then Triple C would be the foaming. Part of the reason why theirs, theirs is higher is because they don't do a lot of the trim work themselves, they had to sub that out. So, and that was more expensive on there.
We're both guaranteed for fifteen years, and we should be in business that long?
Yeah, both good companies.
We'll build new ones by then.
What's that?
Then we'll probably make us build some new ones by then.
We'll be talking new plants by that time, yeah. I don't know, they, got nothing bad to report about the Triple C rough here yet, you know, but...
Is it fourteen hundred bucks better? Looking at the difference here?
No, and, you know, they didn't have any concerns about, about it in that use out there. Just know that, you know, basically, there's a swimming pool underneath it all the time, and it's always wet. And they didn't have any concerns about it, but it's had the membrane and rock on it forever, right, Jack?
Yeah.
That's the kind of roof that is Donald Tarlock.
Yeah, but it's down to the styrofoam.
Oh, it's tanned, dude.
Oh, yeah.
We'll need a motion on that one, we'll do.
Yeah.
For what, Andrews then?
Andrews?
Yeah.
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second it.
We'll call.
Yes.
Staying camp?
Yes.
Gus?
Yes.
Staying?
Resolution, eleven fifteen.
This is, this is an annual filing with the, with the DOT. The report's actually on page five about what we have for, what we have for revenues and expenses dealing with street construction. And then down in the lower right-hand, you see what our ending balance is, a hundred nineteen thousand, as of the end of, end of June. That's the balance in the street funds. We do have to pass this by a resolution, so that's why it's on here as a resolution for the council to consider. Any questions?
Is this funds available for us to...
Yeah, that's, that's kind of my head.
Is the motion on resolution number fifteen?
I'll make that.
Second?
I'll send it.
We'll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Gus?
Yes.
Staying?
Yes.
Clear?
My only comment on that is that our road tax fund will continue to go down as our, our population has decreased. So if we add a thirteen percent population decrease, that's just a per capita fee, it goes down that proportionate amount.
Okay, consider purchaser of VAC. Bill, is your guys that checked them all out, right?
Well, we, we tested four different, four different brands of machines. As it turns out, we, we tested a Vermeer last fall. And they showed us the Ringo Matic. But come this spring, Vermeer doesn't sell Ringo Matic, Ringo Matic anymore. Midwest Underground Supply sells Ringo Matic. That was kind of a funny deal. The one that the Vermeer guy brought up, if you look at the specs on, on page twelve, they make a eight fifty, eight fifty cent for down to the tank. Back ax and then eight fifty high CFM. The, the regular one is six hundred CFM, where the high CFM is a thousand. It's just, it's a bigger motor, they recommend a four-inch hose. Brian and Jeff didn't like the eight fifty, they told that to the salesman. So he goes, well, he brought the wrong machine down, he says, try this, the thousand CFM, he brought that down last Wednesday. Brian's just comments were, they didn't see any difference between the Ringo Matic and the Ditchwitch for, for the suction part. But if you look at the price, the Ditchwitch guy told me, if they would do that, it's between ten and twelve, or ten and fifteen thousand more with a high CFM. And he does recommend buying it, but majority of what they sell are just, which probably don't...
What maintenance on them, is it easy to take care of?
Well, every year, the backs have been around long enough now, they're finding more, and more, better ways to even the filters. If you look at the picture on page seven, the filter sits horizontally before they used to sit vertically. And as the tank filled up full, silt would fill into the filters. But the Vermeer used to come in at, used to come in as a sweep. Well, where it made the sweep, that's where it wore off the metal. So all the pipes are straight into the...
What kind of filter were borrowed on that?
Jerry Cruz had a Vermeer.
Jeff, this is something you guys can use too, right?
Yeah, we can dig into something about it.
We thought it'd be a good idea to go from the five hundred fifty gallon, all it is is a bigger tank, five hundred fifty gallon, we're seeing fifty. When Jack's digging a water leak, you just throw the pipe in the thing, and it gives you that much more time to fill up the tank. It also helps Brian and Jeff, I didn't have to dump that off. We used it right back here on North Side Community Building, I don't know if you've seen the boards right back there, but we, we're redoing the service to the community building and looking at it also, generator bits.
Is there any difference in user preference?
If you look at the specs on, on VAC, there really isn't that many options. It's basically a tank that sucks and a car washer that washes. Jeff and Brian mentioned that the, the Ditchwitch was easier to work on.
They like, they like the way that the door opens, you know, the... Jeff just, Jeff just had a lot more positive things to tell me about this Ditchwitch.
I've heard of Ditchwitch, I've never heard of Ringo Matic.
And something like a lot?
Ringo Matic's made in...
One of the big things was about how quiet this Ditchwitch is, because the motor department is inside, so it, it's nice and quiet where they are. Everybody was on board by this Ditchwitch, and it's cheaper and...
We passed this in the budget, didn't we?
Yep.
That's why we sold the board machine. I thought we passed it, but it turned out...
We said, couldn't somebody, Jerry's and Tim's business, let me, I tell you, you just can't dig anymore, you just gotta suck the dirt out and stick a pole in the hole and go from there.
What was that?
That was, that was the Ditchwitch, Jerry.
You see, it wasn't all that noisy when they were doing it.
Well, we were, I was shocked, you'd actually talk to each other while you were... The one we had up here, the Ringo Matic, came, went to get the mail and come back, she was, she, I didn't say a word, she was, you guys have earplugs on? So, I mean, they do have a, it is good feature, we can talk to each other while it's going.
Do you have a motion on that?
Yep.
I'll make it.
On the Ditchwitch?
Did I say one thing, Ben? They're, they're out of Slater, Iowa, is where the Ditchwitch is at.
We're about to bump into this guy.
Well, I mean, Jeff and Brian, Mike, and Jack, I mean, you guys are the ones that are gonna have to deal with it, not us.
We tried four machines, and last Wednesday, Jeff was covered in mud, from toe to head. I was, the last one, we didn't almost fall.
Second?
I'll make that.
We'll call.
Wait, yes.
Staying camp?
Yes.
Gus?
Yes.
Staying?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill.
Um, we can't forget them.
What, what Ditchwitch does, they constantly have one order. So when one, there's one ordered right now, if you, if I call them up tomorrow and say, you know, you guys ordered one, we'll be on the list. So they're a hot sell-on right now, with that. I'm hoping, Jerry, we can, I'm hoping within a couple months, Jerry.
Mine's more, I mean, it was six months ago.
Yeah.
Okay, code updates.
Okay, you know, several months ago, we brought up this idea that we needed to update our code. Code book has to be updated every five years. And we gave you a couple of prices on, on kind of updating our code as-is versus having the certification company update it. And then we decided, well, let's, let's kind of try to do the best we can and update it ourselves. And we got Zach City's code, which had been updated a couple of years newer than ours. And there are several things in there then that we didn't really like to talk about as far as these possible code updates. Some of them, a lot of them are, are just compliance issues as far as dealing with, making sure that our code's consistent with what the state is. And some of them are some, just some different policy ideas that we just like to discuss some of these policies. But the first one deals with municipal infractions, and that's just the amount of the maximum potential fine for violating the code. And this is state, it's set by state code, so we would increase that to be consistent with what the state code is now. Ours currently is, I think, five hundred for the first sentence, seven fifty for the second. The second one would be updating our, like, this is again in our municipal infractions portion, but just saying that we would update, add some sections regarding alternative relief and criminal penalties. That is just to say that even though we had sought a fine under municipal infractions, that we're not waiving any of our, any of our rights for alternative relief or any criminal... that we're not waiving any of our, any of our rights for alternative relief or any criminal Number three, this is something that a lot, a lot of communities are adopting now, dealing with this disorderly conducted funeral and memorial services. And we hear about this with that, with that church group from Kansas who come to protest at veterans' funerals and so forth. And that's on page four, you can kind of see what, what that would entail. You're stipulating that they, they, basically keeps any of the masses at least 500 feet away from, from the building or from the funeral procession or burial site. Starts an hour before service and ends an hour after the burial. This is already in state code, but I would, I think, could say a code that we should really consider having. Next one, number four, deals with little drinking age sales to folks who are underage. If you look at the blue sheet, page five, this is the city's current code. And this makes a distinction between those folks who are under age 18 versus the bottom being those folks who are 18, 19, 20. Okay? That bottom section, that bottom section of the IO code that have been repealed. So there is no age distinction between them anymore, which is kind of interesting because in that, in that bottom paragraph, it says that, that the minors can drink with, with the parent's permission and a signed written consent of the parent. And that has since been repealed. So what we would look at is on the next page, page six, this is Saks, where it doesn't make any distinction between minor, just that anyone who is a minor is not allowed to, to purchase or possess any alcohol.
This first one was 4501?
Yes.
Person should not sell beer with a supply of, what about somebody that's a high schooler works at, whether it be in grocery stores, maybe they get a ticket if they... And they get a record, and they get an adult conviction.
About, if they do what?
If a 17-year-old were coming to the grocery store and sell, they get a ticket, it's a $750 fine, it's 400. And they're on their way around. That means if they sell to an underage one?
Yes.
But if they sell to an I, that...
They can do that.
They can do that. That's, that's legal.
That's, it's, it's in there. It's the last, the last sentence of, of the paragraph. It's about folks being able to handle alcohol at the... Okay, number five, I didn't, I didn't even include this in the packet, but it's, it's just to say we, we have an existing chapter regarding sex offender registration, and the state code has changed on that, and we need to repeal our whole chapter. We have that 2,000-foot rule, and again, state code has changed on that. And then now there's varying degrees of offenses and then varying degrees of punishment into it. It's not just simply that they can't live somewhere anymore. It may be that they can live in town, but they can't attend places where, where kids congregate or can't attend school functions, especially. So we, we, I think we really need to just get that section and just follow state code Number six talks about updating our section regarding confinement of animals, and this is for those who, it, it's a quarantine, I think, for reindeer. It had said 14 days, and it has changed to 10 days. So we, we would want to get that changed to that lower amount, so we don't have to continue to, to house those animals quite as long. So it's 10 days, it's been 14. Okay, number seven. Number seven is just simply adopting state codes locally for traffic violations. Okay? And this allows us to write tickets for any of these on, on city code, which means all of the fines come to the city. Okay, so if you take a look at that, it starts on page seven. We tell you the areas that we would propose to add would be the top 117, misdemeanor to violate registration provisions, number 10, 174A, about expired license, number 11, regarding instruction permits, number 12, about this graduated driver's license. These are all things that went into place since our, since our code was last updated. Number 14, about the restricted minor's license. Number 16, about use of a driver's license or an ID card to obtain alcohol. 17, again, using the driver's license to obtain cigarettes or tobacco. Number 28 on the next page talks about official traffic control, so we're violating, violating the law. The only one on that page. Page nine, 63 funeral processions. 73, where it says immediate, safe to threaten the penalty. This is the penalty for violating those above, they deal with train crossings. Not a real big issue, I mean, you... 87, operation of those vehicles. Number 105, on the light restricting devices. We would repeal one of seven, the Caltrans, so the state code can repeal. That's the, the only ones that are different from what we have right now. So they would be proposed additions into, into our code. Okay, number eight talks about old tan. That's on page 12. And we, we have some language in our code right now, some old language, and we're talking about the driver knowingly possessing alcohol. And they, that knowingly possessing language is gone. It doesn't matter whether you proclaim to know it or not, if you, if you have, if you are possessing it in, in your motor vehicle, it's a violation. So that's a change to the state, to the state code. Questions on those? Ah, number nine deals with handicap parking. If you look at ours, it starts on page 13, there's about three or four pages dealing with, three pages dealing with handicap parking spaces, how they're designated. And that, on page 16, 16 and 17 is, is what Saks City has. But there's much shorter, and instead of laying everything out there, it just, it just cites chapter 321 of the IO code and the administrative code 661. And that administrative code is much more precise about set specs for, for the parking spaces, set dimensions of the parking spaces, those type of issues that, that really are only addressed through an administrative code, not through, not through a code of ordinance. About operating them on streets, that, you know, basically they're not allowed to be operated unless the, unless the snow hasn't been plowed. Okay, but there's some changes then in, in the state code again. Can you get to page 21, where this is the SAC code? But there's some changes in definition to, to ATV, and it deals with the, the engine size and the weight. But then there's two new definitions of off-road motorcycle and this off-road utility vehicle, which is getting to be a bigger thing. And if you get these gators or, you know, these four-wheel Bobcat vehicles, utility vehicles or whatever, folks tend to think that you ought to be able to operate those on the road. And they're not, they're not licensed as vehicles. They fall underneath these restrictions. We, we've got that argument, and we've heard it before, about, you know, basically, so here I am driving my, my four-wheel utility vehicle. You, we allow the operation of golf carts on streets, why don't we allow the operation of these?
Do we?
We don't. You know, that's the state code about.
We don't allow golf carts either.
Yeah, we sure do. You can get a license for them and...
If they got all the licenses.
You gotta have brake lights. That's a big thing. That's the only kind of non-standard thing, is you gotta have brake lights. And they gotta be inspected by the police department, and you pay your, your $2 permit fee.
Just got one today.
Yep, just issued one and another again.
A yellow one?
A yellow one.
I see it driving the other day.
He's got taillights.
But he, he had the thing outfitted with headlights, taillights and everything.
Who regulates the $2 permit?
Through the clerk's office. It's just, it's an annual permit. They're supposed to come in and get it every year.
I mean, how much is it?
It's set by code. So if you don't want a $2 permit, if you'd rather have a $25 permit, you know, or something like that, we could change that, but...
Two seems pretty cheap, doesn't it?
We're just basically asking people to, to get your, get your card inspected and get it registered, you know, so we know what's going on.
I guess that my only concern is like Carnival weekend, we have all kinds of stuff running around this town, and we just basically look the other way, which I agree with, but I think we need to. For when they have patrol rules through town, they don't look the other way. So I don't know what we, I don't know what we should be doing. Because if we make a rule, we gotta enforce the rule. Because I think it's stupid to have a rule that we end up enforcing, which we have lots of those.
We have a few of those. Yep.
Well, I mean, if it isn't licensed, then enforce it, and if it's a big ATV or STV, or, you know, STV, whatever they're called, or whatever utility they declare.
I think that's gonna be your thought, because there's so many of them now. And they look just like a car, and they have all the neat stuff on them, but I don't, I don't think anywhere in Iowa that they're legal.
On these gator-type vehicles?
Or the, what do they call them anyways? There's something different they call them now.
Oh, you just call them a lot of cars.
Side by sides, or whatever they call them now.
Yeah.
I mean, if they can't be licensed, we don't license them, then they shouldn't be legal.
Right, and we don't license them.
Well, there is a push to make them legal, so we'll, we'll see if that happens. It didn't pass last year. I just know that because Jimmy's trying to sell it.
Yeah, there you go.
It was a little bit because it didn't pass.
On page, bottom of page 21, though, that, that paragraph, this is the main, general, the, the biggest difference then, code-wise, is that as you read through this now, it, it cites chapter 321I of the code for snowmobiles, and now there's a whole other chapter, 321G, which regulates the operation of, no, snowmobiles, 321G, 321I is these ATVs. So for code purposes, that's, that's the main change, whereas all of our, all of our regulations lump everything together, and whether you think that's right or wrong.
Well, we probably should un-lump them if we can, because I believe something's gonna get passed sooner or later.
No, I tend to agree.
And if we don't, if we got them all up together, then we're gonna have to do it again.
But on, on these ATVs, you know, state code does allow you to designate ATV routes. So if there are certain routes that, that you would like to designate as, as being able to ride these ATVs, then you could. I don't know how you would go about doing that. You know, I'd be a little leery about picking and choosing certain areas where you could.
Well, just the option that, that sooner or later, somebody came up with a great point and put a big ATV park out here and make some kind of like, maybe the gas station or something like that.
Because that was one of the things specifically, was that you were allowed to, allowed to designate a route, and you were allowed to designate routes to the gas station and convenience stores. That was specifically allowed under the state code. The other thing that was pointed out is that they still, you know, you could still continue to operate your ATVs for ag purposes, and you can operate them for hunting and fishing. So you could make a good case about, you're just going down to go fishing, maybe you make that one stick.
Put that fish and pull out your left rock.
Is that kind of the recreational fire thing, so we burn them leaves? If you got a beer, then it's recreational.
On page 24 of, this is Saks code, they do have hours of operations for ATVs and snowmobiles, and I guess, I don't know that I'd be really in favor of doing that or not. What, what happens during the middle of the night, Ron, are people still riding?
Yes.
But, you know, I think it's a recreational thing. I'd hate to limit that too much.
I can tell you nobody goes to Saks because they got too many rules.
Oh, really?
It's serious. Poker rings never go to Saks because they got too many rules. Can't get them.
And the last thing, the last paragraph there that they require is this dead man throw out one. I just, I understand you can't buy one anymore.
Yeah, that's, that's mandatory. The federal government makes them do that.
Next page talks about skates and skateboards, and just that, that maybe we want to consider a prohibition on skates and skateboards in the downtown area.
You're that much of an issue with them?
Not huge.
Has been a little more since we put the new sidewalks in, because they just work better for it. But I don't, I don't think it's a big deal either. I've seen three or four kids that, just too much workout. They don't want to do it. If they don't got a motor, they don't want to ride it.
One place I've seen him is on the ramp, out here in front of the, in front of the city hall.
That could be, too, yeah.
That's the only place I've seen him. You don't need a motor there. It's just downhill.
Not too interested in that one?
I don't...
There's plenty of rules now.
Just that sometimes it's nice to have that rule there, too, that when somebody's causing a ruckus, and you can, you can say, sorry, you know, we don't allow skaters downtown. And you can impound your skates for ten days.
They have to walk home and wear a piece.
That's one of the selective enforcement things that I have to agree with, so I can't do that.
I've seen these skateboarders with motors on them.
Yep.
Going down the streets.
Not legal, not supposed to be doing it.
They didn't have a flag on it, so they're legal. They just went down.
Not supposed to be doing it.
Supposed to be, you know, yeah, you have a token.
Yeah. You want to go burning it.
Next one talks about water. So if we're on page 26, second paragraph down, 9003, about mandatory connections. We do require that, that all residences, any building that's occupied, it has to connect to the water, to the public water system, okay? If the waters are reasonably available and the building is not furnished with pure and wholesome water from some other source. So it's just kind of wishy-washy about whether they need to, to connect. And the issue comes up now, and it deals largely with that, the old Schaden building up on the highway, where they had removed those, the underground tanks, but they're... the highway, where they had removed those underground tanks, but they're still doing well monitoring. And the one thing that seems like, we get this question every year from the, from the monitoring people about whether we require mandatory connections. And because if you require, if you know that nobody can drill a well there, the monitoring requirements are different. But our answer to them is, we don't have a prohibition on drilling wells, we just say that if you occupy a building, it's gotta be, you gotta be connected to the, to the water system. And that there's a couple wells around town and they're used for irrigation. Because Marie Workmeister has one, and then down at Jeremy Thorpe's old house, you know, he has one there too, and it's used to water lawns.
What do we want to do?
Just that as you look at SACs on the next one, they, they're just much better defined the fact that you do need to connect to the water system. And it says two-hundred feet, you know, if it's within two-hundred feet of your, of your property, you gotta connect. And stipulates about the existing wells, and, and can, can they continue to exist, but basically says no new wells. Has a, has special provisions for, for not allowing any, any wells in a contaminated area.
If we had this ordinance, that means they wouldn't come up and monitor that anymore?
We, I couldn't tell you that they wouldn't, but we would have a much firmer stance about the fact that people can't just drill wells, and everybody would be absolutely mandated, you know, if it's within two-hundred feet of the, of the main up there, they gotta connect. And without doubt, you know, it's, it's just very well, well-defined than the way ours is right now. If they could say, no, I'm going to provide myself with pure and, you know, suitable drinking water, they could make that contention.
It's got water in the mountain, right?
Yeah. You know, that don't seem to happen.
Well, there's, there's a thing for a variance here too, if, so if somebody wants to come in and make bottled well water, a big business or something, we could give them a variance and they could do it.
Sure.
Pretty sure that's gonna happen next year.
That's your next business idea?
Farming, I'm starting four-fifty a case or whatever. I'm starting to make one of that business.
I haven't, well, it's kind of a, I said, package, the stuff is always falling on me. That's a, oh, that's a page.
Yeah, I can clear it.
Page twenty-nine, second paragraph from the bottom, about compliance with the plumbing code. We have the same, this same paragraph in our existing code, okay? But this says where you need to comply with the state plumbing code, and we need to make that change. Ours currently says Division Four of the Plumbing Rules and Regulations of the State Building Code. It's, again, just kind of a very minimal semantic change, but it means that you're following a different code, plumbing, following the plumbing code instead of the state building Next page, page thirty, and rolls over to thirty-one, bottom paragraph, is a section on tampering with meters. We don't have anything about tampering with, with water meters. And we do have stuff about tampering with electric meters in our tariff, but not in our, not in our code of ordinances. And this is just simply saying that if you found some way to bypass your meter, you're, you're in violation of this code of ordinances. With the violation then being municipal infractions, maybe back to the beginning where you'd say it's a, you know, seven, seven hundred fifty dollar fine on a three-year penalty. Up to that. Understand on municipal infractions, that you cite them for a municipal infraction, it goes to the magistrate who determines what the, what the fine might be. So it's not necessarily that you can have a seven hundred fifty dollar fine. But I think that that's something that we should take a look at, you know, as far as having some, some, the national in our code about tampering with the meter. Number nineteen, this lien exemption thing, it's on page thirty-two, and this is one of those things where it's updating to be consistent with the state code, but it's something that we don't do right now really anyway. This, for water and sewer and garbage charges, you are allowed to, to assess the landlord for, for the fees incurred by the, by the tenant. And we've had this discussions with Bass Council, and we've never followed through to, to assess any of these charges to landlords. And had a big discussion with some of the landlords about this in the past too, and of course, we're too pleased about this notion that they can be assessed this, and instead of state code, they really, they could be assessed. There's some changes here about stipulating that within ten days of a change in a tenant, they need to notify us, and if there's ever a change in ownership, they need to redo this lien exemption. Because there is a, a way to avoid the lien, and it's to put down ninety days' worth of, of deposit on water and sewer charges. So this is one of those instances where, you know, we're not up to date with what the, what the state code is, but we don't really follow through with implementation Any thoughts on that?
Could we change it to that? I mean, if we, that's our own choice.
Just to know that, yeah, you have to, you go off, that you implement it to apply to everybody. They can choose, problem people.
Would that be what we're doing?
By the way, sir, we, you know, we don't require any, any, anything from the landlord. But we can. State laws out there that allow us to do it.
You have the same notification, knowing that landlords are gonna do that.
I mean, it isn't the purpose behind that, except the city just don't mind.
We had one situation a few years ago, there was some families in the city after they were, and Jerry worked with, he was a.
Oh.
A few years ago.
I mean, you got that settled, but I mean, I guess that's an example of it, isn't it, that we're talking about?
Well, if we adapt it, we say no going into it where everybody stands in a fair and gray area, then it'd be, I guess if we wanted to do it, we could, and if we, and he said, yes, we're gonna do it, let's do it.
Well, and this one, you're putting the drop on the obligation on the landlord to cut them out.
And the one, I don't know if this was the last time this was discussed, but it's been discussed before. And one of the major changes was then to institute this hiring deposit requirement. So we have a higher deposit, we have a two-hundred fifty dollar deposit that covers, you know, probably a couple of months worth of bill service. So if a tenant's gonna, in a jump town, we have a, a sizable deposit, by and large covers most of the.
By the time we tag them, at least sometimes they're gonna run.
That's true. They wouldn't say all.
It's a long process.
I guess my only concern would be if we're gonna do that, that landlord needs to get notified soon or late. Because if I'm gonna be kind of responsible for it, I don't know right now, you gotta say, I might go yell at whoever it is, and I can maybe kick them out so I won't get so far behind it. I know I have a thousand dollar bill, I usually have.
Well, when do you give notice then, to the landlord? At the same time you give a notice to the tenant?
If, if the landlord's potentially responsible.
Yeah.
My landlord saw that.
Pretty much.
There's some folks that do that because of that deposit requirement. They have a tough time coming up with a deposit when they, when the move's done. Plus, you know, if it's paid, we appreciate that.
So in his situation, we could adapt this bill and really change.
Wouldn't affect me at all. But I know Donal, he was one of the people I love that.
Terry, Terry's gonna.
And Terry kind of gets stuck with it.
Terry on the front, we asked you.
Yeah, he's related, lawn, who's had quite a few runs, lawn and the political.
I think they notify them, and they're not noticed, and they're conscientious of the change.
It's not fair to stick the city, those ones, right.
Most landowners, they know right away, they're not familiar with the part, they don't.
If they note, if they get notified by the way, they're not.
That's where they got the surprise.
Okay. Number twenty, is something I would like to take a look at, I think we, we need to have something like this. On page thirty-three, this is, it's in the garbage section of the, of the code, but it deals with when fires are allowed. We don't have anything in our code other than campgrounds that say.
And, and, but we're recreational, I'm making that one up.
True.
That he's always thinking about. Yeah, he's running, he's on it.
Anyway, it, anymore, there's two or three fire, backyard fire rings on every block, and we don't have a code that allows that right now, but we, probably not legal.
Well, open burning, they're still probably burning it up by me, or by.
Oh, in the ditch out there?
Yeah.
Well, we kind of put the catch wash on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, like Bruce, he called this stuff.
So when you say open burning, you mean like raking leaves in the yard and burning them, or having contained fire and ring?
Open burning applies to everything. That's why we should have, in my mind, we should say that recreational.
Technically, it'd affect your barbecue if you really wanted to be strictly about this.
That's why they have this top provision on cooking, you know, that cooking is allowed.
Instead of drinking beer, you get a hot dog.
Or marshmallows.
Get some smores out there.
You know, the other part in our code right now, just to understand this, about open burning is not allowed unless the mayor would allow for a time of open burning. And the mayor has not allowed for a time of open burning for several years. And you get along just fine without it.
What about the burning of beer?
As far as, you know, burning trash and that type of stuff is just not supposed to happen. And there's a couple of them around town.
Of course, I got, we have a spot in it. All you have to do is get an air conditioner and smell it.
Yeah, there's something that was pretty interesting, because my office smells terrible.
That's our dump, yeah.
This is how the trees are on fire all weekend.
You know, that's that same old issue, though, we did not like to dump on fire. You know, whether, we, it got pushed back, I don't know when, and whether that somehow ignited it, which it could, but I'm thinking not, because it hadn't been lit for months. So somebody from the public just. Somebody went out there and dumped something and lit it.
The trees left on fire.
I had to crack them again, twice.
Was it twice?
I thought they'd give up and do that again.
By the way, it's been burnt down pretty.
So all we're gonna do here is say, we just want to put something in that says, fire, fire range real quick.
Yeah, you know, basically, I think we ought to adopt A and B to formalize the fact that outside cooking is okay, and recreational fires are, are permissible.
Kind of hard to say that not, when we got campground poles right in the middle of the town, you know.
Say that, that's the only thing in our code that we allow, is campfires in the campground.
I mean, if you name it down there, they smell all these, all these campfires going in, I mean, we wouldn't.
Religious reasons.
Yeah.
What's that?
It says here that you gotta have an application for exemption to have a recreational fire.
Yeah, we, I wouldn't do any of that stuff. We'd just say that it's allowed.
Okay. I don't want everybody to have to come here and say, this weekend I would like to have a recreational fire.
If it doesn't rain, we're gonna do it.
People kind of said.
You're making smarter than us cooking, too, already.
What else we got there?
Loans for solicitors, that.
Oh, that's more of a story than anything, and I don't know if we want to look at, at this type of an arrangement to, to solve the situation, but it's a weird story about the, the door-to-door solicitors who are in town selling all-natural cleaner.
Yeah. And my daughter, she can call it a brief hump, stood outside our store, and I asked her kind of, if they were free to call it a brief hump, they were scared.
Yeah, and it's, it's one of these.
Well, next time, at least call me, I, I can scare them off.
It's one of these deals where they had very aggressive, very aggressive sales folks, and all that it takes to come get a permit is come fill out the form, pay me twenty-five bucks. You know, I talked with the, the gal the day before, when she was calling to set this up, about whether she had that state bond, yeah, we had state bond. I admit I didn't get a copy of her state bond, but I had the state bond, that's what I was talking about. And basically, that's it, that's all we require. And so a day or two after the, these solicitors were in town, Sandy Beckman calls and, and wants to come in and talk through this situation about, you know, just real heavy-handed sales techniques, and the fact that the product that they, they used took, took the finish right off of her new granite sink, and how can you bottle her to potentially claim any damages, not that she wanted to, but her contention was, you know, that the city ought to be doing more to protect the public from these firms that, that can come off as being, you know, either unscrupulous or heavy-handed or whatever. You know, and my, my comments to her were, you know, we, we implement the code, but we treat everybody the same. And don't take too much of your permit.
How often do we have people come through, tell them, you know, do this?
Especially during the summer months, we will get maybe a couple of them.
Have time to do that, so it can do this.
You know, some, but if, if they have set up appointments, if the vacuum person has appointments, they'll need a permit. So what we see is the door-to-door book sales, you know, you get these college kids who do book sales during the summer.
Yeah.
And the big one is these meat sales companies. And that's kind of a hobby for Ted, is that boy sure enjoys them coming to town, because he, they don't, they rarely get a permit, and he knocks them down and they send them, send them out of town.
Yeah, he can't, he can't control the product, I mean, that they sell, I mean, that's like, give a tip, a license, and he sells crappy beer, you know?
I do. My heart.
I mean, you know, he can't control the product he sells.
Buyer beware.
One, that's a lot of it, but Sandy, you expect to hear from her about this, because, you know, she wanted to, she was gonna do a little bit more investigation about how other folks handle, handle these situations, and ways that the city can protect citizens more from, from these door-to-door salesmen. There are some ways, obviously, when you look at SACs, it says, you gotta provide me a thousand dollar, either cashier's check or a bond, and I'm gonna hold this for a year, because if you sell something that potentially causes, you know, damages, or somebody's gonna claim damages against you, you know, they have a year to hold this.
Well, we had a lot of people after that, so, they weren't really selling, they were selling labor, you know, what is to your broken? And I had some people that just would not, so finally I told that gentleman, one more time, now I'm telling, I'm telling this, he finally, well, he came third time.
So anyway, I just raised this was more of an issue, and just know that that issue's out there, and I think we're gonna hear more about that. And just know that that issue's out there, and I think you're gonna hear more about that. Just kind of be thinking about that in your own mind, you know, as far as what obligation does the city have? Who should or shouldn't get us solicitors?
I think that's gonna be dangerous. I mean, we have more services on the door-to-door. When we become a service agency.
But the way our code's written right now, I mean, the only person who has to get a permit is basically the cold sales door-to-door guy. Because if you have appointments set up or even if you get referred, you don't need to get a permit. Yeah, nonprofit organizations don't need one. Girl Scout Cookies can stop by anytime, please. Okay. Page 35, we have a section in our code about excavations. And this deals with excavations within public right-of-way. Now, this says you gotta get a permit. Okay, but it does not mention anything in regards to either 811 or Iowa 1 calls. So we need to incorporate that and make some changes into it to acknowledge the fact that 811 has to call each time. Like I say, this requires a permit. The fact of the matter is, we have never required a permit for anybody to dig in the right way. You know, and do we, partly out of ignorance, you know, I don't know who this people's here, you know, and whether we're supposed to require a permit. But this is another one where it says, you gotta put up a thousand dollar bond to do it.
Good question, on this washing vehicles, is that a, do they look, car washes at the fire department? For hire?
I don't know, where's the washing vehicles, like?
Right, right above excavation.
Oh, that you're not supposed to wash vehicles in the right way, that's right?
Well, yeah, but it says, but it says for hire. You can do it in, I mean, you can do it in your own property.
In your own property?
Yeah, but it says for hire. So like the car wash that the fire department did a couple weeks ago, we didn't know about? Is that legal?
Was it, I don't know, was it in the street or on the parking area?
It was on the driving industry.
Anyway, that's...
Jimmy called me and asked me about the problem.
Oh, he did call?
It was advertised, nothing, I mean, all of a sudden, I was a car wash.
Yeah, I thought we were happy.
I asked Scott, I'm going, what was going on over there? And he said, he missed her and knew nothing about it. You know, like, okay.
Nope.
I just wanted to know if he'd like for hire or not.
Not for, not for the junior class?
It's not a problem, a big problem, I guess it is.
So this digging thing, if we start requiring a permit like we say we're gonna, how much hassle is that? This would be a lot of permits.
Well, if somebody's built some sewer...
How do we let somebody like us know that he's gotta have a permit?
It's, boy, it's basically try to get the word out to everybody in the public. Not, you know, you get the word out to contractors specifically, but try to get it in the newspaper and newsletter and all that stuff, the fact that this is required. I don't know, you know, the other way to look at this is to go away from the permit type of deal and just say that you, it may be that the Public Works Director needs to be informed and involved. And that's basically how it is now.
I think I'd go to that. And somebody having to run up there and give me a thousand dollars so I can dig. You're running out of hassle.
Yeah, we don't. Like I say, we've...
The board called one call. Yeah. I guess that's the only thing good about the permit is we certainly know they called the one call. We just have it in there, they have to notify the Public Works Director, and he can make sure.
Two other things. These are just completely different issues. On page 37, SACS City has a property maintenance code. And this is basically establishes a minimum criteria for how you need to maintain the exterior of your property. We do this now through the nuisance procedures. But those photos that I've had out, you see today, were in line with this discussion about property maintenance code. That the one has, you know, they all, both of them have a lot of structural problems and everything. But the one has all of these trees growing up around the foundation. You know, that certainly would be against properly maintaining your home and we're required that all of these volunteer trees be... In these two instances, there's some bigger issues there we may need to look at. You know, just basically talking with the property leaders to gauge their intention of what they want to do in the future. Because there may come a point at some time that the city would become involved that this has dangerous buildings and, you know, potential requirement that the buildings be fixed or demolished.
Well, I do like this one, it's exterior problems. This gives us a little bit more room to work with than just safety issues.
Sure. You know, and I have, I have some other property maintenance codes that are much more precise about what's required. So if you want to take a look at this concept, we can kind of, kind of examine both the extremes. This is very general, but it does provide some guidance of what exactly you would require for individual properties. But there's some other things I think that we could be more precise on. The other thing that I think we may want to get a precise criteria on is when, when grass is determined to be a nuisance. When do you need to mow? Right now, it's, we don't have a criteria on it, just that grass and weeds need to be kept mowed.
Yeah, they have to clear out the gray area, be a plus. This clears up some of it there.
But what happens if we now have something that we all think's a nuisance, but it ain't in that little color here? We can't do nothing.
Well, you could always...
I'm talking about like the yard ornaments that people put out there.
Sure.
If we don't have it in here, you can't have yard ornaments over 400.
Then you have 405.
Yeah. So how do we, then, we go in and tell them, hey, you gotta clean that up? And they say, well, it ain't in your code.
I think our main, you know, our concern should be safety. If you go around that, then yard ornaments will...
I just don't know if we start, we start writing, so we can put everything in there, we could have it come up with it.
And that's, I guess that's the risk that you run again about whether you want something...
I like the gray area because it could tell somebody this where you're violating this right here, but...
Well, if I can't get it all, but if we got closer, we should go.
I guess you can always pass another rule if we think something's really bad.
Well, I can get you another couple of examples and kind of see which ones, which way you really want to go. Because I think I've got some that are, you know, 10, 12 pages long about very precise on how you maintain things.
Man, I don't want us just to have a rule, just to have a rule that we're not gonna enforce.
We already have an example of this. And we're, you know, falling down the part from the exterior of the wall and whether you're gonna enforce it.
Which we're saying.
Yeah, I've got nothing new on that one either. Because I was checking with masonry folks, see whether they would, masonry schools, see if they would fix that.
Must have a new classroom now.
I haven't checked back with them, no, I must have been, I kind of dropped that one.
Didn't they indicate they were gonna put some steel up?
That's what she said, but...
Didn't check.
Yep.
I think we're just a while away from that thing falling in.
That's a bit of special damage, isn't it?
That would be a very, that would be so bad.
Last issue I wanted to talk about, on page 39. When I was reviewing a lot of this stuff with Aaron, this is one thing that Aaron had discussed, is establishing criteria for the number of people who would live in a structure. And this one then comes from Early. I know they have, the town of Early has a rental, a whole section of rental ordinances in their community. So this applies to rental places, not necessarily if you happen to own them. But there's a lot of merit to these things about establishing. This establishes a minimum number of square feet per occupant. And this says, first 150 square feet for the first person and at least 100 square feet of floor space for each additional inhabitant.
So is that the only part of this you're proposing we put in there is that? Not all this other...
If you read through number 11.
And all that other stuff?
Number 11, yeah, I'm looking at number 11. But there are many aspects...
I have a big problem with this group system one.
I was looking at number 11, but there's several different criteria in that that, you know, just, not that it has to be anything like this, but we do want to throw that out there as a, as an idea about, you know, should this be something we should consider?
I know it's a big problem in Storm Lake, Dennis and probably...
It'll stop it from getting here.
At least we'd have the power.
Right, sure.
Let's go over and look at that. Somebody's got them, isn't she? That's why, that's why it's smoke alarm in the garden, that was right.
Smoke alarm in the garden, maybe they have that.
You got insurance, you got that stuff. Yeah, check that.
So if we're back to the, to the recap page after the yellow sheet. We didn't want to do the skates and skateboards thing in between, but, you know, what are the things we really want to look at? Or we can look at it the other way and say that we think we ought not to be doing. Which ones?
You don't really want to change the outdoor cooking, do you?
If I do, I would add...
There is a lot to change. Because it allows it.
Yep.
Maybe we get some different ones on specifics on the maintenance of the property?
Yep, I've come up with different stuff on that.
What was the one on people?
21?
Water?
Put on solicitor, a thousand dollar bond if you live within, within 50 miles of here or something.
I don't know, I just think we don't do that one, but...
You know, I'd like to keep proceeding with the recodification. So there's a lot of these that are important for the recodification, but anything on page 2 is not. So 21, 22, 23, 24, we can continue to work on those. And those can be added to the code at any time. Same thing with 16 on that mandatory water connection. And I just want to make sure that we have everything squared on the snowmobiles versus ATVs thing. But other than that, you basically would like to, a lot of her take a lot of those.
Wow, that's really got to stay code too.
Yeah, a lot of it's procedural stuff. Then if we get all these passed, and then you do pass another ordinance at some point that recodifies your code. And then we get the, that will then buy us another five years' worth of good time on a code. So if it's okay with you, we'll work with Aaron on a lot of these ordinances and we'll, you'll start to see a lot of them come back at you.
So what are we gonna do with 15 then?
I just struck it out that we would not do it.
What I did too, I just would do no.
They're gonna come back to us one at a time?
Well, I need to discuss this with our attorney about how we can procedurally do this because I'm sure you do not want to see 18 ordinances on the next council agenda.
Whatever it takes.
I mean, how can we combine them all into...
One more?
Yep. Probably not one, but several. I mean, I think you can combine like issues into a single list. But we'll need to discuss that, how you think we can do that?
Might be wanting to come back.
Sure, yeah, I'd really hate for a part of an ordinance that I give you, you'd not like, you'd not care for it.
Then we can't pass all the rest of it.
The rest of the...
I mean, it takes 18 votes, it takes 18 hours.
We're pretty good at making motions.
Yes, that's yours. The soul moves a little bit.
We can just have that baby going.
Okay, I will, I'll work on that. Yeah, if you flip a few pages back to, where am I? Page 13 of the front part of the packet. This is that alley we talked about at the last meeting, about whether we could deed any of that property. See the hand-drawn dash line through there? That's Bill's drawing in an electric line. So we do have an electric line that runs through there. Those solid lines that I drew in. The alley extends further to the north, but there's a garage back there that is served off of that alley. So basically, any parts that we could look at, at selling to the neighbors are the parts within the area where I have drawn that in by hand. Having said that, Bill would prefer that we not sell that and that it retains access. He says he uses it to, for access back and forth through that area. You know, it's one of these things where we can accomplish the same thing through an easement if need be. But I don't know, I guess I'm not, I wouldn't advocate in favor of selling the property either, but...
I don't think we're gonna want revenue generated there anyway.
Oh, you know, it's be one of these things where they pay us a few dollars for the property and they'd be responsible for all the fees. I don't know if there's a whole lot of public benefit to it.
That alley actually goes between them two houses, huh?
Yep. That's the way it's planted.
Which property is it?
Well, you were Steve Beckman's, was that where I looked at? It goes in between there and Charles.
Boy, I...
Jim Carroll.
Hawkups.
I think it's Hawkups, it's between Hawkups and Charles.
It's the other side, it's the other side of Jim Carroll's.
Okay.
Jim Carroll's and Hawkups.
Okay. The other issue that I had on the agenda deals with just the concept of community development and our position with Emily. That Emily had been hired by the community club here for this calendar year. And now she, she has gotten another full-time job with this Blue Space Creative in Dennis. She will fulfill her obligations to late view through the end of the year. But just a little bit about, thinking about what's gonna happen then after that time. And do we, do we still want to look at having, you know, some type of devoted community development staff person? If we do, you know, I guess I just would contend that's kind, it would not end up being kind of the same person as Emily is. Be more of a hourly coordinator who could work with businesses and special events and just do some of the coordination.
Is there any way Emily would do this? Is there any way Emily would do this as a second job?
Nope. Yeah. Plus, it's, you know, it's not her.
It's a god-what's of interest.
Yeah, and not, I suppose somewhat, but I don't know that it's, that we're looking at that type of stuff anymore. You know, bluntly speaking, Emily would cost a lot of money and we, I don't know that we were looking at that anymore. But I do want everybody to start to think about that a little bit. You know, give any comments about what you see happening after the first of the year. Because it could be that we don't have anybody and it goes back to Community Club and volunteers and we can.
It'll die then. I mean, you almost kind of need someone getting all the volunteers together, getting with the businesses. I mean, that's kind of where we fell short in previous community clubs, wasn't it? I mean.
It certainly has helped absolutely to have somebody who moved in. You bet hit the bricks and get out and meet with folks from downtown.
I mean, to have a plan and then not do it or not get it done or have everything fall short that we've gone this far with it.
And another thing that's good about it, you've got your groundwork started. So, I mean, we've got an idea of how we want to proceed with this and then find the right person to do it and decide what you want to do like. I think you need to have somebody still spirited somehow.
I'd like to see the Community Club sit down and talk about it, talk about what they think, because I know they ain't got no money left. We burned through a lot of money this year. I don't know if anybody realizes that, but there ain't a whole lot left, so they're going to have to come up with some kind of plan.
Nope, I agree.
And maybe they've got something they want to step up.
But I think the city should support it and we can, I mean, I know where the city's spending a lot of money. On somebody that is a lot less or a lot more personable than what we already got.
Yeah, I thought it was she did this.
Finding the right person.
We, this concept of having a rain garden at City Hall, we had, at this proposal, it actually went out to bid with our Streetscape project. And got down under the nitty-gritty and this was axed out at the project payment for financial reasons. So we put this in as a urban project into these grants that they've been applying for for the lake project. I think it's funded, so we can do an example of rain garden at City Hall. And.
Beth Hatch has applied for a lot of two, I heard.
The concept at City Hall is that it goes out this north, this north area between City Hall and the north, in that area that's kind of marked off by the sidewalk, so. It is proposed to go there and there would be this grant funding that's available for it. It's the Oil and Water Conservation Service and they're getting some rough ideas together for us as far as plants we see soon and that type of stuff. For what needs to be in this rain garden. And within this rain garden, it, you know, that area doesn't drain necessarily much area, but it does drain downspouts off the roof in that time. So that's why it's being proposed to be there for a rain garden. But, so it's more the concept of, you know, city leading the way on the environmental stewardship. And then the education about what people could do on their own that would help with water quality issues.
Is that coming with a fight for the smoke?
Mayor, holy cow!
It's not with tar.
I'm going to see pictures.
For mosquito farm. There's no standing water in the thing unless it happens to rain, you know. Typically, a water, a rain garden accepts an inch of rain. And that's why they would always have an overflow on the rain garden. So if you look at the, so you come into Storm Lake on the road there, right by the intakes, you see what looks like these weed patches, but they're the rain gardens. I crossed my bike right over there.
I think we did the weed patch thing up on the sign.
There was a problem.
So gross, yeah. Absolutely. Wow!
Would there be any matching fund that we have to do?
It'll establish a maximum dollar amount on their behalf. They talked to Boulders out there too, it was a thousand bucks, you know. They're in for a thousand dollars. And if it costs a thousand bucks, they pay for it. We just won't do anything too dramatic.
Couple of weeds.
Oh, this would be lovely.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I can see some bellbeads, couple of buckleeds.
Oh!
Maybe just paint the stuff that won't.
Paint the road blue. Oh, blue concrete. Waves of blue concrete. Okay, we've started that year two study on it from NMPP on that lager, lager green. So that, you'll see that coming back at you in probably the next couple of months. Just know that I got a complaint today about Lakewood Drive area out there and people speeding through that area entirely too much. And Ann Irwin came in and saw me about this and suggested that we ought to have a speed limit out there above fifteen miles an hour. And I went through the process about really what we're supposed to do with establishing speed limits and, you know, it's twenty-five miles an hour out there now. A typical residential district is twenty-five miles an hour. If we would look to deviate from that, there need to be some solid reason why and solid reason, probably a lot of these established by speed study. And, you know, I just don't see it doing a whole lot of good to try to lower that to fifteen miles an hour out there in that area. Everybody's going to pay that anyway.
Well, hey, what we doing now, right? We're going to sign it.
If you hear anything about that, that was the discussion we had. This weekend, I have a special visitor in town. It's a horseback circuit riding preacher is coming to town.
Did he pay you the twenty bucks?
This one's only beginning to be a good joke.
Here's the punchline, here's the punchline on the jumping, the circuit riding preacher is staying at my house.
You're going to make it rain, that's what I want to know. Just they run around and go west and make it raining.
A horse is going to be tied up in a tree.
That's my issue, is that he shows up on Saturday, four o'clock in the afternoon or something like this, and you see a horse tied up to a tree.
That's when he eats all the bark off your maple tree.
Until he leaves on Monday morning, so.
Who's paying up the pool?
My wife works in the back, she'll get that taken care of.
And that's the time to train with the green excellent.
Nothing I have any of that in my yard. So anyway, that's my, I'm just letting you know. You live in a whole lot of livestock in town, but it's not, it's just visiting livestock.
We'll just pretend you're Roy Rogers and it's all.
Oh, boy! Yes, we're talking a little bit of snow removal stuff and that's another thing that was on your, as you see. While back, we had talked about the notion of snow blowers. So Ann Jack had looked into that quite a little bit on what we would have for any options on snow blowers. So I gave them, that's both things and then the room things on the back.
Basically, I was looking, they're putting tires on them, just getting over this winter. They're talking about sixteen hundred bucks. So, well, Scott's been talking snow blowers, so. And we were thinking of a dump out and stuff that might be kind of nice load of snow, but I could never find one that worked for the tractor to work, so. Only way, you got to get a high-flow skid loader and loading trucks. So otherwise, if you bought a normal skid loader, a normal blower would be all right. That's just, and I figured it'd be a lot more money because it's a new series, so I figured that'd be another ten percent more because they raise price. And you're putting high flow on it, which is another thirteen hundred. And they're giving us what, or other one that's for a couple of years ago.
What do you say?
Twenty-six.
Portrayed about what we had in original list before. Just that the concept was, you know, what can we do to change the way we load snow? Could we use a snow blower to do that instead of the traditional old backhoe? So as Jack looked into this, there wasn't a whole lot of options as far as what to do other than get a skid loader mounted snow blower. But again, that required high-flow hydraulics on the skid loader, so that's why when you look at this, that's a trade price on the Bobcat. Trade for ten, ten-seven, and then a price on a snow blower was seven thousand dollars. So I really like the concept of loading with the snow blower. I think that has a lot of merit.
What we have to do with it to our dump trucks different than?
No, it's like a twelve-foot high chute, you know, boxes are like eight and a half, so. And I think it will come out of our trucks. I don't know, I've never blown snow over the truck. Sometimes when it's really wet and stuff attacks it, it's definitely weird, but one of them does. But something nice about blowing snow with the packs is when you seem like you can get a tighter load and pull you home. So, you know, if I ever go spend sixteen hundred dollars on tires, Scott's always bought that like a lead blow man on there, so. And now we can wait for two years, you enter it too, like we normally do.
Would you have enough pit, truck power potentially to keep the snow blowers or the snow blower loaded faster than we can get rid of it? You know, I'd say if they're loaded up.
I think you still, you know, if you had two trucks going, you can do cleanup work and do other stuff. Now you're going to have a little bit of those push up and clean up. I still think you're going to have some downtime. Ten percent merits, percent. I mean, either the truck sitter or somebody's always made you sit a little bit, I suppose. Scott, maybe it'd be an idea on all the deals they do quite a good, you know, they blow snow in the back of trucks. Maybe talk to them and see, you know, if it has an issue when you blow in the back there if it doesn't come out as easily or. Sack City does it all the time. They have regular fill boxes that fold into the box.
Like liner?
It's liner, it sticks out past the tailgate. They then tailgate down and it's, it's a, it's got a, it must be three, four foot above the box. I mean, it's like a sively box on there. And, you know, they do it. They only got two snow blower, they blow theirs and it's like, so, yeah. And if it, for some reason it don't work, it'd be out the thousand dollars if you take the truckload and shoot off and use it for a snow blower. Around town or around the lake or whatever, you could probably use a snow blower sometime. But that would be the only thing that would be out over a regular snow blower.
We need to hire Larry now, don't we?
Right, right, especially out by your place. It's really good stuff.
It's got room on the body, right?
Yeah, I just, the schools, I think they're going to put one on our old skid loader this year and use it up there for the sidewalk. And I just, I didn't plan on, I just threw a price out, so I said just throw one out there. And I'm not really interested in that right now, but, or like this thing, I just figured, well, we're going to spend about sixteen hundred dollars on tires. They don't know us anything, so we can wait for two years, we can send a budget, I think it's in for two years.
Yeah, that would be about the time we come up with.
We usually get about two years on instead of tires.
Not that we need to do anything with it, just kind of FYI.
FYI, I dropped this topic to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. We did have one pending nuisance situation in deals with Dennis Workmeister and his property on North Shore. And he's been mowing the property and also didn't have cleaned up any of the sticks and stuff, the big branches back there that had been sitting for a while. Give him notice to clean all that stuff up and it was supposed to have been done by the day, it hasn't been done by the day, so. We get out there and start to mow it a little tomorrow. I don't know if it'll be tomorrow maybe, but it's a first job. Do we charge him, give him the after, you pay him if he doesn't pay you?
You didn't call him, no?
Haven't heard from him.
All right, please stop, Jen. Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought he was going to say.
Have you got the trees picked up?
What's that?
He's got a big pile of limbs up there. Just one for the lifestyle.
Nah, I think he got into all the news and the fashion on his pile of leaves. He's kind of a central. I told him just more. Maybe he could burn it.
You'd have to get a fire ring.
Make a fire ring, yeah.
It's a noise.
Old tragic title.
If you're hot, then we know what's going on.
Fire ring all in one.
Next, Wednesday, Sack County League starts up in some of Sack City, Wednesday the seventeenth.
Move me down.
I will be unable to attend.
Oh, really?
My parents have a lot. I probably do just the right.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Are you on? Mayor?
It's maybe pick it up. Depends how it starts, that's another.
I'm leaving up a few guys to make sure you guys haven't hit it. You guys let me down, I'm going to have to go to the next one.
We're not going there because we host Northwest Iowa League on the Halloween night. You made that one? So that's the fifteenth out of Glacier Bay. Okay? I will send out reminder emails, oh, yeah. I'll need to reply back for Northwest Iowa League, so be some idea about who. That's it?
That's it?
I'll make the motion.
I can poop.